On their, through the message board tomorrow, just reminding them of the upcoming event. It's going to be just a notification. We're going to blow the whistle and that will be it. If it was a real emergency, people that have Vermont Alert would immediately get information specific to their location and what they should do to, to get to safe ground, basically. So I encourage people to sign up for Vermont Alert. It's rather painless. If you don't want it to go off in the night, you can set all sorts of parameters. It's a very good system. In a real emergency, we have the ability through Vermont Emergency Management to geolocate people. So even people from not in our area, that happen to be in the flood-prone area, we get a notification over their cellphone. So we have a lot of avenues on top of our city webpage and so on and so forth. But for this test only, you're going to hear some sirens. You're going to hear our fire horn. There's going to be listeners around the area just to see how well it gets the word out, so to speak. If anybody has any questions, by all means, they can give me a call at the station or tonight.
Any questions for the chief, Alderwoman Hooker?
Can you tell us how to sign up for Vermont Alert?
What's that?
Vermont Alert. Can you tell us how to sign up for that?
Yes. If you go onto the Vermont Emergency Management webpage, and just there's a heading where you can go to VT Alert. There's a description of it, and if you read down the description, it'll give you different options as how you can sign up, be it through your cellphone, your home telephone number, or for the impaired. They have systems in place for that.
All right. Alderman Gillum?
Just a comment, because I use it, because I travel all over the state all the time. It's excellent. It tells you when a road's closed. It tells you when a road's flooded out. It tells you what the town is doing, construction and move you around. Yeah, everybody should be using that, because it comes right on your phone and you just respond that you got it. So, and then maybe you get it the next time.
And they even monitor fire activity. So if we were to have a large fire in an area, they will actually broadcast to that specific area to keep people out of the area. So it's very, very handy and it's come a long way.
Great. Appreciate the information. Thank you. Next, Alderman Gillum would like to speak outside the rail.
Sorry for doing this, but I'm wearing another hat representing the Loyalty Day Parade Committee. I just want to make sure you have invitations on your desk to invite you to march in the parade. You all, you don't have to fill out the paperwork. Just show up in front of McEachernables and we'll stick you in the parade. Not a big deal. Also, for the general public, we also made the parade a little bit smaller. It's the same route as the Halloween parade. The reason why we do that, because we have a lot of mature veterans who can't make it all the way around, and some mature high school kids who can't make it all the way around. So we decided to shorten the parade up for that reason. So it's easier. It's also be less stress on the city, because the last time we can't get around the city. This way, you got Cottage Street and some other streets you can get around. So it's not tying up the whole city. Plus, it helps Jim with his budget. We're not using so many dump trucks to block streets out. So it's a savings all the way. So I want people to show up. And in May 7th, this Sunday, at 2 o'clock, it starts, and it will go down Whale Street, and it'll go down to West Street, and then to Merchants Row, and it ends in front of the plaza. And it's my understanding through my weather friend, that the weather is going to be excellent on Sunday, which is going to be the best day of the whole week. So show up at the parade. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board from outside the rail? Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on to communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus?
Thank you, President Talbot. Happy birthday. We should be saying. Okay. Good evening, everybody. First, I would like to request that the board move from the table the nomination for city clerk.
All right. So we have a motion to untable the nomination for city clerk, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now move to circulate the ballot box. Second.
So we have a motion to circulate the ballot box, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. So while that ballot box is circulating, I'll go over my report. So what we have done, so last week, we submitted a pre-application along with Barbara from the RRA to the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant. So this pre-application puts us up for that $75,000 grant. We did some research, and it is prime for solar. Right now, we haven't picked a project yet, but that would be a great help. If we look at that, you know, when you think about what the city has from a solar capability, we can either have our own solar arrays, which we can use 100% of that energy to pay down our bills, or we can buy seller credits, which currently were maxed out on solar credits. So this allows us to generate solar energy and use that to pay down, or to cut down on our solar costs. So if you think about going with solar for this grant, it's a free investment. There's no match, and we could be generating power for no cost to the city whatsoever, that then will buy down our power bills. So it's a really good advantage. On the same path as grants, the MERP grant, which was the Municipal Energy Resiliency Program, we had talked about choosing buildings. I'm going to ask that the board convene, the energy committee convene another meeting to help go through that building selection process. I do want to make a comment real quick. I did a little research into your comment about the wastewater treatment plant. They do use a lot of fuel oil to heat the digesters as well, and that wouldn't benefit from this, but I do think it's worth looking into how much they use for energy to see. So we should still consider that as we go forward. So if I, we could have a motion to refer that to committee.
I entertain. So we have a motion to refer this to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing or hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Kupley, and myself made a visit to Montpelier a little over a week ago, and in that visit, we met with the Rutland Caucus, had a conversation with them about what's going on in the city, our short and long-term plans, which you've all heard as well. And that was a great discussion with all representatives from Rutland County, as well as our local city representatives here. So that was fantastic. After that, we were able to go meet the governor and the speaker, and Alderman Talbot, Kupley, and I sat in on a combined committee meeting on Bill S-100, and that's the bill that Ted was talking about earlier, right? And S-100 is, is, it's a land use meets housing bill that will really either dictate or help the city in how we look at housing over the next few years. So that's going through process right now. I want to send a little bit of thanks to Alderman, oh, sorry, Representative Clifford, who's been helping communicate back and forth in real time what's going on with the bill. It has just been voted out of his committee and has moved on, but there's a lot of work to be done there. So if you want to take a look at S-100, I can pass this around if you want to take a look at the bill real quick. And if you want to take a look at the bill as a pass committee, and how it will affect us, you can also look it up on the state's website. I met with Ashley, who's the executive director of the United Way here in Rutland County. The United Way in Rutland County is looking, starting in October, they'll be starting their next fundraising campaign. And I don't know about you, but when I was growing up in Rutland, United Way stickers and United Way signs were everywhere. And when you think about the United Way, a lot of people are maybe a little bit confused as to exactly what they do. And I think the best way to talk about them just briefly is that they take donated dollars and can essentially distribute them as grants to organizations that help in our community. So if you care about, if you care about childcare in our community, if you care about homelessness in our community, if you care about services, look at the United Way and take, take a look and see if they, you know, meet some of your needs. And the reason I mention this is they'll be coming to us at some point here in the future to talk about their campaign and how the city and the United Way can work together. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. Real quick, on a different note, last week, Bill McGinnis from the DPW Sewer Division has retired after 23 years. And then this past week, after 35 years of service to the city of Rutland, Scott Taggart has retired from our water department. And neither of them are here, but I think we should extend our thanks, if that's all right. Thank you very much for your service to both of those gentlemen. That's a long time for anybody, 23 and 35 years. That's fantastic. So what we're actively doing right now, transportation planning. We had a meeting with Andrew Sternisty, Devin Neary, and Ethan Peppin, and we talked about the future of transportation in Rutland, the long, long view vision, right? So where are we headed? What does it look like to have roadways that satisfy traffic without impeding bikes and bikes, bike lanes and bike transportation and pedestrian transportation without impeding traffic, right? And that's a complicated thing to work around. So we need some long-term vision and views on that, kind of how that plans out. We talked about how do we leverage some of the new technology out there to make the pedestrian experience across our city a little bit better? Is there a way we can detect how long you're in a crosswalk for and maybe extend the timer? So if you think about someone who might take a little longer to get across a crosswalk, you know, can we assist and aid them in some ways? And the reason we're having these discussions now is there are some future grant opportunities to do studies and figure out if these things will work in our city. So that's one thing that we just started talking about, but we're going to keep that on the radar. We also had some conversations at the Ad Hoc Housing Committee about the My 10% for Vermont. So I've talked about it a couple times now, but there's an opportunity at the state that allows us to borrow money that we can use for projects. And there are several projects that could really benefit from low-interest loans. These aren't necessarily city projects. They're not anything that we would be doing ourselves. These are things that people would be coming to the city and saying, hey, we need financial assistance, and we can refer them back to this committee and this group to get those money. So that's coming along quite well. We're moving through, reviewing the application, the application process, and we're going to start taking a look at that over the next few meetings. So I'll continue to update on that, because I think it's important. The REC had an RFP site visit in Main Street Park last week. It went very well. So this, the architecture and design has been done. The contractors came out to look at the site. They're working through that process right now, and we should be seeing those responses fairly soon for the park, which is great. Okay. And then what are we doing next? I got a communication from Laz. They are actually putting together a marketing plan for the garage, which is fantastic. They're going to be reaching out to business owners and local downtown residents to say, here's a parking pass option. Here's how you get access to it, and doing some other things to outreach, maybe with Paramount and other organizations, to say, these are the services we offer in the garage, and here's how you can access them. So that's something to keep your eye on. I have a meeting this week with Angus from the Homeless Prevention Center to talk about the resources that are available now and what's going to be available at the end of March and at the end of June as the hotels let out. So we're having that this week. And then capital improvement planning is something that we're going to start thinking about. So the 1% option tax has passed through the House. It is currently in the Senate. So it's going to go through a couple of committees in the Senate, and once it passes out of the Senate, we'll have our charter change enacted, and then we will be, starting in October timeframe, to collect that 1% option tax. Part of that option tax is the capital improvement piece, where that money's going to go to fund big capital projects. So over the next few weeks, I'm going to be talking to department heads about what their capital plan visions are. What are the big projects that they see on the horizon in collecting that data? I'm waiting for an appropriate time, right? TPW's heavily under summer construction, so I don't want to burden them with this yet. But we're going to be, and each department is very busy. This springtime really gets, everybody gets kind of ramped up. So over the next few weeks, we're going to slowly lead into that and start asking for those projects. So if you, as older people, have suggestions and ideas, I'll be asking to hold a committee meeting at some point to get the ideas from, from the city representation as well. And then last thing, Jim already went over it, but the Loyalty Day Parade is May 7th. It's the 60th annual, and it is 2:00 PM downtown this Sunday. Any questions?
You're going to be there?
I'm being there. I'll be there. Absolutely.
Y'all heard it first.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Dungus.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we have the results. Mayor Dungus's appointment to city clerk, Tracy Capusta is approved. Six yes, three no. Additions and deletions to the agenda. We need to remove William Knoll's request that it is before the Board of Control Commissioners. Do we have any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Can I get a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request to sign a resolution to apply for the downtown designation renewal. There's a memo, a copy of the resolution, and informations on the benefits of the downtown designation in your packet. Barbara?
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
So you may or may not know, but the city of Rutland has a downtown designation. It was good for eight years. It is now time to renew that designation. The process is a large undertaking, but with help from all of the city departments and the downtown partnership, I am confident that we'll be able to get all of the pieces pulled together for the June 5th deadline. So tonight, your part in this process is to sign a resolution in support of the renewal, and that is in the packet.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Any debate? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now move to circulate the resolution for signature.
Second. Second.
And we have a motion to circulate for signatures, and it has been seconded. Any debate or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Barbara again, seeking approval to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of community support for, or a letter for support of an application to the USDA Rural Development Grant on behalf of New Story Center, and a memo and a copy of the letter are in your packet.
And I just wanted to let you know that Elizabeth Kulis is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have regarding the application and what is being asked of you tonight.
I'm also going to introduce Abel A. Lanning.
Sorry. Abel A. Lanning is the executive director of New Story Center, and I, Elizabeth Kulis is the principal of Kulis Consulting and working with New Story on their shelter expansion project. So just really quickly, we have submitted an application to the US Department of Agriculture Rural Development for a community facilities grant. And one of the components of that application is a letter of support from the municipality. This is a project that you all have previously allocated $100,000 from the ARBA funds to, and we're very grateful for that. And so really, we're just looking for you all to bless the mayor's signature on this letter so that we can concede our application. I'll let Abel A. say anything else.
I was just going to let you all know from, you know, I've never seen people, eight people in our office so excited about construction fencing that has gone up, but construction fencing has gone up at 101 Grove Street, and the, the project is well underway. So this is, it, it is, the project came in when the bids came in. It was more than we thought it would be. And part of the application for this grant is things that we pulled out of the original, the original project and are funding in another way. And so it is, it is moving along as planned, and we've added another room to the project. So there's, it'll be eight rooms instead of seven. And I can't wait to take you all on a tour when it's done.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Thank you for all of your work for New Story and for the residents there and for really vulnerable members of our community. I know we all really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign the letter for the USDA grant.
So we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, and it has been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And Barbara, a third time, with a request to refer to committee a review of potential revisions to the special benefits district revolving loan fund. There's a memo and a copy of the revised policy in your packet.
So what we're asking is that you refer this to the Community and Economic Development Committee for review by that committee. I listed in the memo the changes that are being proposed for this revolving loan fund. And also, this, this pot of money in this fund has been used since 2008, and I did provide you with a list of all the successful loans that have, where grant were given and repaid.
Alderman Gillum?
Go ahead. Oh, I was just going to move to refer to Community and Economic Development.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to refer to CED, and it's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
As much as I've enjoyed being here week after week, I am taking the next meeting off.
All right. Next, we have Commissioner of Public Works and City Engineer Rotundo with a request to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent to participate in the FY24 Municipal Roads Grants and Aid Program. There's a memo and a copy of the letter of intent in your packet.
Okay. So this grant is worth $21,000, and the funding is used to correct erosion issues around the city. And we've participated in this program for the last several years. So it's really a good program. It's, and it really allows us to correct several problems that we have on either lining swales or cleaning up stormwater outfalls. So again, we're, I'm asking the board to authorize the mayor to sign this letter of intent to participate in this grant program.
Alderman Gillum?
Move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillum?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent to participate in the SFY24 Municipal Road Grant and Aid Program, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, and it has been seconded. Any debate or discussion? Alderwoman Hooker?
Thank you. Commissioner, could you just, I've seen the term hydrologically connected road segments. Can you just explain what they are and perhaps some of the places where there's a big problem and that we would have to comply with the rules, and perhaps some of the rules, some of the things that have to be done in order to comply?
So in my memo, I did explain what a hydrologically connected road segment is, and that is one that drains directly into surface waters, streams, rivers, ponds, lakes, and wetlands.
Okay.
So it's really, you know, it's really, these grants are DEC trying to get municipalities to correct erosion issues, to stop sediment from, from polluting our natural resources.
All right. And so you'd have to do particular things to meet the standards, and that's the reason for the increase in cost, or the necessity for the monies?
So these projects need to get done, and they're willing to go ahead and give us the money to go ahead and get those projects completed.
Any particular place that you can think of offhand that's, you know, a real problem?
Yeah, there was a study. I don't have this coming years projects, but we use the RRPC to do a survey around the city. They put a list together, and then those are the projects that we put this money towards. Now, last year, we did some work on River Street down by the bridge. There's a swale down there that we had to clean up. We also did work on Catherine Drive and also on Stratton Road.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any additional debate or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next, we have a request to approve and circulate for signatures, oh, sorry, two items related to the combined sewer overflow check valves.
Okay. So the first one is I'm asking the board to authorize the mayor to sign the Step 2 Engineering Services Agreement with Weston and Sampson Engineering for Design Services for the Combined Sewer Overflow Check Valves Project in the amount of $55,500, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city engineer, uh, city attorney. The check valves will prevent creek water from entering the combined sewer system during seasonal high-water events. So what's been happening now is when we have high water, we have a lot of rainfall, the creek levels rise, and we actually get creek water in our combined sewer, and we're treating additional water at the treatment plant. This is actually the third CSO long-term control project that I brought to the board. You've previously approved the Connor Park Storage Project and the Meadow Street Stormwater Separation Project. So this basically will get the third project into design. And regarding Weston and Sampson, we did a, an RFQ back in November of 2018. At that point, Weston and Sampson was rated as the highest consultant. So again, in DEC's eyes, we're using Weston and Sampson on this particular project. We've already selected them back in 2018. That RFQ is good for five years. So this November, we'll go ahead and send out another RFQ. And there's two areas that these check valves are going to be installed at. One is CSO Location 1, and that discharges at Calvary Cemetery into the Otter Creek. And finally, the other location is CSO Location 2, and that discharges into East Creek at Connor Park.
I entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillum?
Move to authorize the mayor to sign the Step 2 Engineering Services Agreement with Weston Sampson Engineering for the Design Services for the Accommodation, excuse me, Combined Sewer Overflow Check Valve Project in the amount of $55,500, and the final form of the ESA will be approved by the city attorney.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Rotundo?
Okay. So now we'll move on to the actual loan portion of the same project. So again, here I'm requesting the board to approve and circulate for signatures the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Step 2 Final Design Loan Application for the Combined Sewer Overflow Check Valves Project in the amount of $63,000. Now, this amount is slightly more than the, than the ESA, and that's because we typically put in an allotment of $5,000 for legal expenses and $2,500 for permitting fees. Move to suspend, suspend the rules?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent for the loan.
And?
Six, how was it, 60?
This one's to approve and circulate for signatures. Commissioner Rotundo?
That's correct. Yes.
All right. So a motion to approve and circulate for signatures?
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any debate?
Yeah, just.
Alderman Gillum?
Let's make sure the clerk does that exact motion. It's in the memo here, so we get it correct and we don't screw up the federal or state government with this.
All right. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have reports of standing committees, which we have one. Alderman Gillum with a report from the Public Works Committee, a copy of the report, and supporting documents were placed on your desk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy birthday, by the way.
Like a gag now.
Public Works Committee had their meeting on April 15, 2023. Members present. We had a full committee present. Barbara Gallo-Gillam, Kupla, Adams, and McCain were all present, plus the other member present from the board, Wes Davis. Jim Rotundo from the Commissioner of Public Works, Mark. of Public Works, Mark Patrick Smart, which is in the audience with us today, from MSK Engineers, the Water Department Scott Taggart, and the new Water Department Manager Tom Garofano. Meeting was called at 5:30. The issue was water system service line inventory. The new federal regulation led in copper rule revision 40 CFR Part 141 Subpart 1 LCCRR. That's the federal line item that's paying for all this, just so you know, we're doing all this. Required every public community water system in the country to prepare a service line inventory and lead service line replacement plan prior to October 2024. With a close of, we have 6,200 connections in the City of Rutland Water Supply System, and it's a very massive project, because we seem to be one of the largest towns that are doing this besides South Burlington. Patrick Smart from MSK Engineers from Bennington Mopiler briefed the committee on the project requirements for compliance with the Agency of Natural Resources, Department of Environmental Conservation, and the Federal Law. He explained what the process entails and how we build the plan, and how the information on the 6,200 connections will be collected, and who will file the report with the state agencies. So the committee, and I will talk a little bit more about what we were doing in there after I get the motions on the floor. A motion by Alderman Barbara Gallo to move to the full board for approval and circulate for signatures to submit the ADWSRF line, service line inventory loan application, in the application amount of $800,000, and the committee voted five to zero. I need a second.
All right, so we have a motion. It has been seconded. To approve and circulate for signatures. Alderman Gillum?
Yes, and I need to give you a little bit more information here. Actually, what I probably could do is turn it over to Jim and I guess if you'd like to talk about it a little bit, for the other members who are not in the commission, or I can read this off if you like.
Well, I mean, I can let Pat discuss it a little bit further. I mean, we're here to answer any questions you might have. But I think one thing I want to bring up is that in the memo, again, in our committee meeting, you know, DEC looked at all the different communities, and they realized that it was going to be a very expensive venture to get all this done. So there's a special program for this. And under this program, if we borrowed, we could borrow up to $804,440. And we would, they would pay $452,220 of that, excuse me, would be forgiven. So we would have to pay back $352,220. So that's a lot of subsidy that we're going to get. And again, this all has to be done by the end of October of next year. So there's a lot of work involved, and I'll let Pat just talk about that briefly. And we felt that we really needed to have an outside consultant do all this work for us. And Patrick can discuss a little bit of the different contracts he has, and he also has a contract with the state. They were the expert in our eyes to get this done, to get it done right, and to get it done on time. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Pat.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening, everybody. My name is Patrick Smart. I'm with MSK Engineers, a civil and environmental consulting firm. And I'm here to talk about the service line inventory project. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have about this. I would say briefly, just to touch on the new federal regulations, the lead-in copper rule revisions, they require every utility in the country to inventory every single service line. And that's the pipe that connects the drinking water main to the house, and it needs to be the entire length of the line from the corporation to the foundation wall. We've started working with the town of Bennington back in 2017 on identifying and replacing lead service lines throughout their community. This happened before the new regulations were passed. But our experience there has given us a ton of experience, and we've developed new techniques and have a real deep understanding of what these types of projects involved and how to identify buried pipes without necessarily digging them up. But on that note, I think I would be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Alderman Gillum?
I'd just also like to add some more information on the memo I sent you this afternoon, so the people at home knows what we're doing. We also have, of the 6,200 customers, there's 159 in Rutland Town who are hooked up to our system, plus the Alpine Pipeline. So people don't know what the Alpine Pipeline is, that's the one that goes from Rutland to top of the Killington Pass or the Mendon Pass there with the Enid Long Trail. So they have 63 accounts. That will not be part of our portion we're going to pay in. We haven't figured out how we want to charge them yet, but they will be charged accordingly to cover the cost of those inventory pieces.
Alderwoman Davis?
Well, if we could speak to, because we talked about in committee, that it's not every house. It's based on age of house or how the house was built.
Oh, of course. I'm sorry, am I speaking out of turn?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, great. That's absolutely correct. The state of Vermont, there's a certain date when there was a statewide prohibition on the use of lead pipes for drinking water. And so anything that was constructed after that date can be presumed to be not lead because the prohibition was in effect. That date happens to be July 1, 1989. So part of a key component of this project, really think of it as three separate events. Event one is records reviews, where you look through old drawings, permit files, allocation letters to try to establish materials that were used to construct the pipes or construction dates where you can infer the material that was used. So that's part one. Part two is customer engagement and outreach, where we will launch a campaign to engage with residents and make them aware of the project and the need to observe pipes in their basements. And then step three is to actively go around and try to gain access to look at pipe materials near the meters at service line entrances. I would also add that part of our customer engagement strategy does include providing direct outreach and instructions to homeowners so that they could either click a hyperlink or a QR code, snap a picture of their own pipe in their basement, and upload it to the database. We could then review it, follow up with them if we have questions. But that's one way that we could potentially collect information without having to go into everybody's home. Also, as part of the project, we plan to collaborate with public works staff. If they have a technician that's going to be in a basement doing a meter replacement anyway, we'll make sure that they're set up and ready to complete an observation and upload that information directly to us so that we can work together and maybe provide some savings, too.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and circulate for signatures, the loan application. Alderwoman McClure?
I did have a question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
For Mr. Smart, but as small as Mr. Smart is the city attorney. If we, because we are operating under the case of assumptions that pipes put in post-1989 would be lead-free, would the city or would MSK Engineering be responsible in the case of, God forbid, potential litigation if a pipe was containing lead despite being put in place after 1989? Who would that responsibility fall on if we are not inspecting those pipes put in after 1989?
That's a great question. And there, I'll try to answer it a couple, that question's to me, right? Not the attorney?
Yeah, to you and the attorney, whoever you got to answer.
Okay. So what I would say first off is that this, let's, this service line inventory, EPA is looking at it as a living document. And the intent of it is to use the best information that you can gather initially in accordance with state guidelines, which we're doing. And you put together the inventory based on the best information available at the time. However, the EPA has been very clear that they expect year to year, utilities and towns will uncover additional information, in which case they'll go back in and update the inventory. So in the scenario that you just described, based on all the information we could find available today, we say, oh, it's not lead. Lo and behold, next year, we find out there's a lead pipe. I would think at that time, the, what it would catalyze would be a review of, well, what information was used to say that was not lead? What other homes did we use the same logic to make that decision for? And what should we be reevaluating as a way to update the inventory? So that would be the consequence, and that would be how it would be handled. Did I answer your question?
Yes. I was asking in the, in the form of who would get the lawsuit if a lawsuit were to occur?
Sure.
Answered the question perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? Alderwoman Hooker?
Thank you. As the report indicated, this is a massive task. Do you have a timeline?
Yes, we do have a timeline. And the regulatory deadline is to have this submitted to the state by middle of October of 2024. And what we envision is a project that will take about a year to complete. And we would anticipate kicking off the project in earnest, starting in, ideally in June of this year, and wrapping up and providing a draft inventory, draft lead service line replacement plan in June the following year to the city to review and approve. And we could discuss comments, but that would give us enough time to go back and forth and refine the document ahead of the October deadline.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing nothing additional. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillum?
I have a second motion here, a motion from Alderman Barbara Gallo to move to the full board for approval to contract with MSK Engineers to prepare the service line inventory and lead service line replacement plan for the City of Rutland Water Department at the cost not to exceed $800,000, pending final review of the contract with the city attorney before the mayor signs the agreement. The vote was five to zero. An iso move.
Second.
So we have a motion for approval of the contract, pending final review. Any debate or discussion or questions?
Just a comment, just so everybody knows, how come we didn't bid it out and all this other stuff? This is a very specialized project. And these, this company is, has got a great reputation with the agency of conservation, environmental conservation in the state. They've also done the project in Bennington where they had their real big problems down there. So they're a very legit company, and I think we are going to be doing the right thing of bringing them on, so.
Commissioner Rotundo?
If I could add one thing to that, too, and the contract is written for not to exceed, the amount is $800,000. So really, if it turns out, as Pat described, I mean, if we get a lot of people taking photographs and sending information in, and there's less work that they have to do, obviously, we're going to, we're going to spend a lot less than that. And then the second part of this is that this, you know, our portion of this, our share, would come out of our capital fund. And in the, in the water capital fund, if you add distribution with our, with our plant, you know, we've got close to $2 million in that capital fund. So I think, you know, we've got, we've got the resources to pay for this. And it probably will be, you know, much lower than the 800, depending on how it all pans out.
Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one little more paragraph.
Alderman Gillum?
Sorry to complete, but finally, the committee thanked the Water Department Manager, Scott Taggart, for his 35 years of public service to the taxpayers of the City of Rutland, and we wish him well on his retirement. We also congratulate Tom Garofano as the new Director of the Water Department. And that's the end of my report. I'm adjourned at 6:30 seven.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Next, we have reports of representatives, which we have none. Reports of select committees, which we have none. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. We have a special event permit approval request for three coin drops to benefit the Rutland County Humane Society. A copy of the request is in your packet, and you'll see that all four preliminary approval signatures are there. They're spread across several pages, and Chief Kill Cullen's signature is in the form of an email. Alderwoman Tadio?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to approve the special event permit for the Rutland County Humane Society's coin drop on Merchants Row on June 17, July 15, and August 12 of 2023 from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate?
Well.
Alderman Gillum?
I have been pressured to vote for this from the domestic side of things here, so I will go with this.
Thank you, Charlie.
I can't say no. I can't say no.
You're not going to ask?
Anything additional? Mayor Dungus?
Can I just say, Alderman Gillum is not a fan of coin drops, hence his hesitation.
That's right.
But loves cats, right, Billy?
Apparently, some people do.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Great. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Alderwoman Davis?
I just want to remind Alderman Gillum, now, who was chair, he wasn't at the time, that I did do a referral to committee in regards to the separation of water sewer bills from tax bills. And the reason I bring it up is because we're paying them right now, 14 days apart.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a lot of money for people to reach into their pocket in the same time in a month to do both. So I think we, we addressed this several years ago, in the sense, and we were kind of asked to wait until the new meter system was in place and all this. Well, it is in place. It's time to move forward. It's time to separate these payments. So I would encourage that we have a meeting with DPW. We need Gail Garuso present to see how do we do this and get it, get these separated and give the taxpayers some kind of relief.
Right.
It's our referral.
Yep, all right.
Just a reminder.
Mayor Dungus?
Alderman Davis, I absolutely remember that. I think it's a fantastic idea. I will set up an internal meeting in the next couple of weeks to start discussing the process of getting that.
Great, thank you.
And I'll report back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional unfinished business?
Unfinished business. Public Works, the commissioner wanted me to ask the board members, because I know we have a lot of new board members here, and you probably don't know the facilities that we have in Public Works. So he's offering to do a tour, and I just need some, it's going to take an afternoon to do that because we have to drive around to all the facilities. Because I think it'd be very wise, when you're going into a budget process, you understand what these facilities are doing and where they are and what it costs to run them. So you just tell me what days are available during the week or an afternoon we can do this. Not just the Public Works Committee, but all members, new members who want to take the tour.
Great, thank you, Alderman Gillum. Moving on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. First, Alderman Barbara Gallo would like to present a proposal for several solar sites on city properties. A copy of his proposal is included in your packet, and he'd like the issue referred to committee for discussion. Alderman Barbara Gallo?
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't say happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you.
What I'm wishing to propose is a study through the Environmental and Sustainability Committee for various installation of solar sites throughout the city, and to see if we can seek grant money to pay for these or low-interest loans. If we can do this right, we can probably do this without it costing the taxpayers a dollar, if we can find sources for the income. And if we do have to take out loans, my suggestion is to use the money that is raised through the generation of power to pay off the loans before we actually start taking any back for the city. This way, the loans would be paid off faster. There would be less interest, and we would then have the solar panels free and clear for at least 20, 25 years, which would pay back the city and hopefully lower our tax rate a little bit. I suggested nine possible sites. I'm sure there's others. But I would like to get this referred to the Environmental and Sustainability Committee.
I'll second. I just would like to add that when the committee meets, we have solar credits that go to buildings now.
Yes.
From solar fields that are up by the high school and by McDonald's. So maybe we could ask that the treasurer provide that information as to the credits and the impact it's having on those electrical costs at this time for those buildings.
To add that to that, Sharon, also, I didn't realize this until I was doing some research. We have solar on top of the rec center.
That's correct.
And that, I believe, is a 90/10 split right now.
Right.
And we're getting the 10, unfortunately.
Right.
But that could be looked at again. I believe that was inherited when we purchased the building. So there are a lot of possibilities out there. And I think with some study, we might be able to make this work for the City of Rutland.
Great, so we have a motion to refer solar projects and exploring those to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Thank you, Alderman Barbara Gallo. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderwoman Tadio.
So I would also like to refer to the Environmental Committee, the creation of a mission statement for this committee. Additionally, the creation or investigation of the creation of a green fleet policy, which basically what that is, is it looks at any time that the city is going to be replacing city equipment, that we're looking towards electric vehicles, so city mowers, things like that, that we're looking into those alternatives. And then I also would like to refer the investigation of a home weatherization program and how we can be doing more outreach to city residents on how they can do home weatherization projects and what resources are available to them through the state. Yeah.
So we have a motion to refer three items, some mission state, discussion of a mission statement, a green fleet policy, and a home weatherization program to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. I would entertain a second.
A second, sorry.
Okay, so it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate?
I just have a question.
Yep.
About the home improvement, because there's so many entities out there that are doing that now. So I would not want to incur a cost to the taxpayers for doing that, because we have several good programs that we collaborate with now. So I don't understand, I guess, what we would be doing.
Yeah.
Alderman Tadio.
So a few weeks ago, I had a meeting with the Brandon Energy Committee to get ideas from them about what we could do with the Environmental Sustainability Committee here locally. And some of the things that they do are run workshops, or it's like free, like the committee is putting these on, but for city residents to basically get them connected. I think a lot of people don't know about resources that maybe the city already is offering, like what you're saying, or other entities that are doing this type of work. But home weatherization benefits because it's lowering our carbon footprint, and also it's lowering people's electricity bills. So it's beneficial in multiple ways, and so I just want to help people get connected with those types of resources. But I don't envision this being a cost to the city, actually.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes. Any additional new business? Alderwoman McClure.
Thank you very much, and happy birthday. Good evening, everybody. I am going to present tonight as this board's representative to the Regional Transportation Advisory Committee, the Animating Infrastructure Grant from the Vermont Arts Council. I'd like to speak on this opportunity. It is a grant which pays for the design and installation of art and other placemaking on or adjacent to public, public transportation infrastructure. This project funds up to $15,000 with a 20% local match. This grant is due June 1, 2023, for fiscal year 2024. Because of this, I would like to refer this matter to the Community and Economic Development Committee to investigate the feasibility of applying for the grant. I think this would be a great local opportunity for the city to continue to build on the existing downtown murals, which have already done a great job improving the sense of place and community here in Rutland City. I would propose the city investigate the feasibility of this grant going to pay for the installation of public art in and around the Transit Center. The Transit Center is utilized not only by existing Rutland City residents, but also serves as a gateway for visitors. I myself have utilized the Greyhound bus very often coming to and from, from college in my undergraduate years, and many people use this already for transportation up the ski mountains to Killington, Ochemo, et cetera. Given the complexity of the ownership of the Transit Center, this is why I believe it would be valuable for us to place this in community and economic development, and again, so we can investigate the feasibility of applying for this grant. And in the packets, which I put on everybody's desk, there is also the grant application guidelines, if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion to refer discussion of this program to community and economic development. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Alderwoman McClure. Anything additional under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business? Mayor Dungus, did you want to add something?
If the, if the board will have me, I would like to read a proclamation for the month of May. Whereas bicycles, as we recognize them today, have been around for nearly 150 years, and whereas bicycles represent a sustainable form of transportation for people of nearly all ages and abilities, and whereas bike, sorry, excuse me, and whereas the affordability and accessibility of bicycles provide transportation freedom to people who don't have the ability or desire to buy, maintain, and drive a car, and whereas recreational bicycling, both in the city and nearby, provides a great outdoor experience for the residents and visitors alike, and whereas bicycle-friendly communities represent vacation destinations and preferred localities for people with the ability to choose where they live, work, and play, and whereas bicycle-friendly communities can benefit from safer streets, reduced traffic, reduced infrastructure construction and maintenance costs, and improved economies, and whereas the Velemon Trail is proposed to connect Rutland City to a statewide network of mountain bike trails, and whereas the City of Rutland is poised to capitalize on all of these benefits, and whereas the month of May has been declared National Bike Month since 1956, therefore, I, Mike Dungus, Mayor of the City of Rutland, here do by proclaim the month of May 2023 as Bike Month, and in for Rutland City, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance. Any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Alderwoman McClure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question in regards to this proclamation and how we, as a city going forward, will help cyclists as a whole. Is there a plan for the implementation of more bike racks across Rutland City? I know myself, as a cyclist, I struggle with finding proper bike parking. I've taken out a couple of racks at Walmart before, pushing my electric bike through the aisles, so I was just wondering if there is plans going forward for that.
I am sure that bike racks will be part of the bike transportation planning that we do, so thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business?
I'll move to you.
We have a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned. Thank you.